Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, May fourteenth. Working session for the Planning Commission. So this is a meeting where we will discuss items, but we will not vote or take make any decisions. And we'll begin with our first opportunity for public comment. There will be another opportunity at the end of our meeting. Persons may speak for up to three minutes about any item they choose. Please state your name and address for the record. You can use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star. Six. Nine. Help me out, everybody.
Star. Nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute your phone.
Thank you. Star nine if you're calling in. We'll wait one minute here. Are there any participants? We have some attendees. So if you want to say, address the Planning Commission, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or you star nine to raise your hand.
Several of these will be joining us for our discussion. So I'm guessing why that's why they're here.
Okay. All right. We will close public comments then. And we'll move on to our agenda item this evening, which are text amendments to discuss potential text amendments for the TC one.
Yeah, thank you.
Filing category, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Leonard for presentation.
Thank you. You're getting the B team today. My apologies. So I'm about to invite a couple of representatives to join us, but first I just want to set the stage with all of you, Commissioner. Several of you are on the ordinance revisions committee. So you had an opportunity to see some of these proposed changes. To set the stage, we have had an application made to the city to make a series of proposed changes to our TC one district. Many of these are in the context of a proposed project that is under consideration and development at near at the north. East corner of Eisenhower and South State Street. The ordinance revisions committee had a discussion of some of these proposed changes with some staff recommendations. As you'll see from your memo included there, our staff interpretation was that there was general agreement on many of them. There was some additional information that was requested to sort of evaluate a couple, another change and then one, a couple just sort of left in the ether. And so we've made some progress on some of that additional information and we thought that we had this working session scheduled that we could keep some of these moving. We thought it was an opportunity to both bring some of that additional information to you as well as to maybe widen the experience set of the planning commissioners beyond the ORC members about these proposed changes and some of the discussions. As I said, I'm going to bring in the applicants who have asked for these amendments. I'm going to afford them a brief opportunity to just give a brief presentation of some of their project and some of the aspects that they're interested in pursuing. And then I'll go through some of these changes one by one. I would ask members of the ORC meeting. I wasn't at your meeting, so I will do my best to categorize what my notes indicate were from that. But I would certainly welcome any corrections or augmentation that you have of sharing that discussion with the balance of the commission. Again, no votes will be held tonight, but this will further refine this hopefully for the next step for us to actually get this scheduled with some specific language for a public hearing at the planning commission. So with that, I'm going to add to our party. A series of project representatives. They're all frantically saying, yes, I'll join the meeting. And Tom, you were going to do the brief presentation, I presume?
Yep. Thank you, Brett. Hopefully everybody can see my screen currently. We move a couple of windows around. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Tom Covert. I'm with Midwestern Consulting. I'm here tonight with, I believe, Todd Johnson from Crawford Hoying, Andy Andre from the Oxford Companies, and my colleague Candace Brayer. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to give this brief presentation as you consider the TC one ordinance revisions. I'm going to be a bit brief with respect to your time and knowing that the ORC members that are on this or at this meeting tonight have heard, you know, much of this at that meeting. But as we go through this and you may have questions and want me to get into details on things that I'm not getting into detail of, so feel free to ask questions. You can imagine that on a regular basis, we're interfacing with developers and property owners looking at projects in the TC one corridor. It's by that lens and the lens of the Arbor South project that we have encountered ordinance items that we think may warrant additional consideration. Our goal with the suggestions are to create predictability while limiting any risk and uncertainty. I mentioned the Arbor South project lens that's made this visible, our request visible, and share with you that some of you may recall that we were before you to review some concepting that we had worked on with the project in months past. This is a revised concept. The design team has been advancing towards site plans in middle. So you can see here that we've been involved, evolving that that concept as we move forward. We had a couple of requests to modify zoning code. One had to do with curb cuts. We were requesting some clarity with regard to curb cut calculations, which seem to be supported by staff and ORC. So I won't spend much time on this right now, but we believe that suggestion does creates some clarity in the ordinance. As you can see with our concept as the example, we've highlighted our six curb cuts. The modification allows for a natural urban cadence to the block layout and creates clarity in the code. Another element that we had requested modification was with regard to parking structures fronting on public streets. We were suggesting a revision be made code to allow a small portion of the parking structure to have frontage on non-transit corridor designated streets as written the code. The code requires the first floor for the first 25 feet from the front to be permitted primary use or not a parking structure. We are suggesting a slight modification that appears to have some support, allowing a small portion of the parking structure to front on a non-transit corridor designated street. We're sharing here our building elevation along boardwalk as an example of this code modification. In our case, we have a site that fronts on three right of way. Two of the the fronts are on state and Eisenhower designated transit corridors. You can see here that we are activating the frontage along boardwalk within the green dashed line that goes around the active front, the storefronts and doors and so on. And then we have a small portion to the left on your screen that is the parking structure and relates to the front of the non-transit designated street. Our last requests for consideration pertain to the interrelated elements of building dimension, frontage and block length. Building dimensions in the TC one code are limited to a dimension of 250 feet. We are suggesting that consideration be made for larger building dimension. We think the majority of the projects in the TC one zoning district will be redevelopment sites. We believe there will be future projects that will be land assemblages that have size beyond a typical urban building parcel or platted lot with an established block. We think there might be inclusion of proportionality, allowing for flexibility and block size. This will be an important element of code versus projects using variance request as a solution to building dimensions greater than 250 feet. This request appears to have gained some support, so I will not get deep into this unless there are questions during your discussion that you might like me to answer. The building frontage code requires building frontage at 70% of the lot width. Through our concepting, we have learned that we can meet the intent of the ordinance with building faces and active frontages. But we come become very limited in our ability to include unique pedestrian open space elements along these frontages. These spaces may be for natural feature preservation, gathering space, art installation, or to preserve sightlines at intersections. We would like to have these open spaces as part of the allowable frontage when calculating conformance to the to the frontage percentage. We understand that this may not have a lot of support, but we appreciate the consideration and we'll have a graphic definition of this in an upcoming slide. And while you're looking at building dimension and building frontage, we should not forget about what defines a block. Is it the street center line, the pedestrian space or the curb line? Or staff notes in their memo is the block size controlled by curb cut and building dimension. Now to put these into practice. Building dimension. By way of example, we have two buildings here that are outlined with the yellow oval dashed line that exceed 250 feet in length. But they do seem to have no discernible impact on what might be represent what might be represented by a typical block, urban block. It still has the same cadence with curb cuts and so on, as you look through the urban grid. We were curious too. So we were curious too with regard to what a slightly longer building length meant. So the Oxford team as pedestrians went out, walked a number of buildings as indicated by this chart. What they found is a pedestrian might walk about 4.7 feet of frontage in a second. They also found that in that 4.7 feet of frontage per second, a pedestrian experience with a building frontage at 250 versus 300 feet is about 10 to 11 seconds. So that 50 feet, that additional 50 feet translates to 10 to 11 seconds of additional pedestrian experience along that building. This slide depicts depicts our desire to have public spaces counted towards building frontage. We have areas about the site that are adjacent to right of ways that have unique opportunity for pedestrian green open elements along frontages, creating interesting project features. With application of this code, these features could not exist. We would like to see these pedestrian green open elements be considered as part of the frontage. We have a courtyard here along boardwalk that serves as a unique feature along this building frontage. We also have a pedestrian plaza near the intersection of Eisenhower Parkway and State Street. This is unique in that the existing frontages or corners at this intersection do have space and open elements incorporated. And we're trying to mimic that with an infill TC one project to some extent while we're respecting the desire to have building faces at the intersection. Also with this, we do have one, a busy intersection where it's been indicated to us that it can be challenging for pedestrians. And by including this plaza, we continue to keep sightlines open from a vehicular pedestrian perspective. Zoom into this. Block definition is graphically represented here as far as our frontage plan goes. We understand that blocks are currently being interpreted to be measured at the center line of the roadways. This is an important location or this, the notion of defining the block is an important element of the ordinance because it influences the frontage calculations for conformance. Our understanding with this current interpretation at the center line would create one frontage percentage when calculated. Or when we look at other, other elements that exist at a development or an urban setting, we look at the curb line. Nobody would ever really see the center line. They would just know that they're halfway between the roadway. Whereas if we define the block at the curb line, that's something that's defined in space and and relatable to a pedestrian. Anecdotally, we posed this question to our design team of architects, land planners, civil engineers and land surveyors as where does the block start and end? There were some varied answers for sure, but the most common was the curb line where the pedestrian space changes from vehicular space. We'd like to see this defined in code as the measurement for frontage requirement. So in closing, I want to thank you again for the opportunity to share with you our experience with the TC code. Our request for modifications. We have some of our team members here tonight and would be happy to share our insight and answer any questions you may have as you consider the modifications to the TC one code. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard, did you have more that you wanted to present before we begin discussion?
Um, I'm happy to jump to discussion. I thought maybe we could start. I could just frame some of these one by one. Give a little bit of the background to my understanding of the previous discussion, some of our staff perspective. Again, I think and then maybe we can just tackle them one at a time if that works for you.
Yeah, I was gonna also suggest that we go through them one by one, well, particularly maybe the first two.
Yeah.
Pick up individually, maybe then we move into a conversation around frontages that might be more complex.
Sure. So let's start with the increase in curb cut limits. So one of the things that when we were drafting the TC one district is, as noted, we actually did something distinct from how we regulate curb cut openings for the balance of the city. That is, we put a restriction on the entirety of the lot rather than the frontage. If you look in our code, we have a different standard for the majority of our site, for our properties in the city where we base the amount of curb cuts you can have based on the frontage you have on a street. Our TC one language is very restrictive. I would say overly restrictive in that regard. We actually said we are going to limit you to curb, two curb cuts to property per property for sites over 250 feet in width. That is very limiting for a site such as this one where you have frontage on two separate streets or three separate streets for that matter. And so staff does think an approach, a change here is appropriate. Just a couple of things to consider. If we were to just eliminate any unique standard for curb cut openings with the TC one, this particular site would be eligible for, I think, six curb cuts based on our current calculation that we would apply elsewhere. One of the things that we are presenting, and I think the ORC members were in an agreement with this is adding a new standard for TC one that would provide a curb cut up to every 250 feet. That replicates that building block that we utilized mimicking some of our downtown smallest blocks for that pedestrian oriented scale. And it would provide a similar pattern for curb cuts to be existed on a site for this site that would provide up to 10 curb cuts. I think one thing that the commission could be thinking, why allow more curb cuts than where we allow elsewhere? And I think one of the reasons for that in this case is that we also have a lot of other design elements that are part of the TC one that help emphasize that pedestrian scale. So even though applying a new standard of one every 250 feet in this case would actually result in more. I think that there are other design requirements of the TC one district that make that appropriate. And again, it mimics the scale of downtown. My understanding is that the ORC was very supportive of this. I'll leave it to ORC to validate or dispute any of that. And certainly if any of the other commissions have any questions on that proposed change.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Does anybody want to start us off with a question or a comment?
Or validation.
Or validation, or anybody from the ORC want to append? Yeah, Commissioner Dish.
I have a question, but I would cede to anyone on the ORC who wants to speak first. So Julie, do you want to go first? Or you're not an ORC? No, you're just, you're just a god. So, so in terms of mimicking downtown, the idea is that there are alleys downtown. Is that right? That often happen after buildings and that's why that's the cadence. When you're downtown that you, the streets and alleys you experience curb cuts, is that sort of?
Those are actually more frequent. The 250 feet is actually the block, think about like the brown block downtown. That's probably a 250 foot block. So that dimension is actually not replicating a cadence between an alley and a street, but rather a like from Ashley to Main Street or from Maine to Fourth. So that's, that's a more, that's, that's the equivalent.
Thank you. That's helpful. In my head, it's hard to picture 250 feet. So I wouldn't have realized. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherby.
I can't hear you, Commissioner Weatherby. Maybe it's just me.
I couldn't hear either.
Okay.
Here.
Yes, now we can hear you.
I'm having audio issues, so. So I think what worries me with this or that I don't quite understand is that we replicate the blocks for pedestrian scale. I get that. And that makes some sense, but we are not replicating the street near them for pedestrian, for the same downtown scale. So like Eisenhower and state at this location are very big, fast streets. I mean relatively. So when you're adding more curb cuts, that feels more dangerous for pedestrians, more dangerous for bicyclists, non-motorized transit. And so having like allowing more curb cuts in this area than downtown with higher street speeds. I, it, it just, I, I have concerns about that. Because it is not a downtown, while it replicates the built infrastructure to a certain extent, it is not actually replicating the entire structure and scaling down those, the vehicular. So, so that's, that's my concern is that we're replicating a piece of it, but not the piece that makes multiple curb cuts safer downtown. Because people are going to pull out, they have a lot of room, the vehicles have a lot of room and time to be fast and in a way that downtown, you know, people are slowly backing out because there's not so much room. So that's just a concern that I have about that.
But just a point of clarification on that comment, Mr. Leonard. The proposal is that the ordinance would allow one curb cut for every 250 feet of street frontage. And 250 feet is approximately the size of the shorter block in the downtown. So there would just be one curb cut per downtown length block. Is that? And Commissioner Weatherby, you're saying that that's more than what we currently allow downtown?
I, what, how I'm interpreting Commissioner Weatherby is that having that cadence downtown, actually downtown is often a higher cadence, right? Because you might have that alley curb cut in between. But I think take that out. Say you take a block like on Main Street. Say you take like the bank block, which has no, you know, there aren't alleys off of Main Street. I think what you're saying is even that cadence of Huron Street to Washington Street may not seem appropriate as far as frequency on Eisenhower where the conditions of that street are different. That's a bit of a tension I would just name is that part of what we're trying to do here is to change that physical form. So it does feel safer for pedestrians. That's why we're trying to bring buildings up front. So I think that's what I'm hearing is that that might not be that might not be an equivalent for vehicular openings on Eisenhower, even though it works on Main Street. Is that right?
Yes, and I don't can, I don't know if you can hear me. I may have to, I think I'm gonna have to reboot. This keeps, I'm having to switch back and forth. So, um, but yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's just that having the buildings come up is good, having the, but you're still at a much wider street. And so it feels a little different. I, I don't, I'm not saying that this is a bad thing or, but it's just, that's the first thing that kind of comes to my head is like it's not quite the same.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Hi, um, yes, I found Commissioner Rotherby's comments kind of in line with some of my own thinking. I was also curious if there's been any study or discussion around how this might impact rapid, like bus rapid transit. Anything like that, because with like more cars coming in and out and like if that will slow down buses and just curious about that.
So undetermined now, that'll be part of the analysis, but certainly part of this forum is to try to find more opportunity for housing that is going to be connected to that bus route. So, but that'll be part of any, you know, as you know, we do a pretty comprehensive transportation study, a project to scale will be no different. So that will include a full analysis, not only of vehicular travel, but how it's going to impact all modes of travel. So I don't know the conclusions, but I know that that will be part of it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess my question, my question is more on like a systems wide basis, like a, just, you know, starting and stopping and rather than I know that we do traffic, you know, reviews and everything, but that's it. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner White.
Can we see the proposal that we're looking at again?
Mr. Covert, maybe you could pull up that just the kind of overall concept plan?
I'm sorry to clarify, but can we see the, what the text suggestion is? Okay.
Well, this is the existing.
Raise my hand. So our ask on this is to no more than two curb cuts per public road frontage. And then what we're looking for is some clarity. Table five, 5.17 dash eight, the current code has lots 250 feet in width and then lots 250 feet or more. There's definition of a lot in a site. And if you go to another section of the code where they talk about ma- maximum number of openings, they're calculated based on measurements along the frontage of the street. So what we're looking for in, and feel free to stop me if I'm getting too far in the weeds on this, but there is, if we look at code, we are there may be an opportunity for more curb cuts because of how the existing site sits based on the existing lots that are there. So for example, our site includes the small office building, this gas station, condo unit here, condo unit here, this condo unit and this condo unit. So there is one, two, three, four, five, six units or lots that exist here. So the calculation may allow for more curb cuts as it's written into code. So depending on if you apply the TC one, which we would in this case, because we're TC one. And then there's a whole nother element where curb cuts are calculated differently. And we're just asking to kind of clarify that, position them in one spot and clarify that this just says lots more than 250 feet or more in width, no more than two curb cuts. Does that mean the 23 acre site that has frontage on three different roadways only gets two curb cuts, but yet I'm supposed to try to design that in 250 foot block lengths? That's a difficult proposition without creating new roads on my site and only having two curb cuts.
So the, yeah, just to clarify the, the we could debate the, the numbers, but I think one of the proposed amendments is to revise that to refer to street frontage. So to, to regulate curb cuts according to street frontage and in the UDC street frontage is the length of a premises abutting one or more streets. And a premises is I just had it here. Bear with me contiguous land in the same ownership or control, not divided by a public street or alley. So in this case, it would, you know, it would be the street, the street frontage would be the length of all of the, the development. Since it's now under ownership, which I think is more, much more clear than talking about lots, because this one development could have 50 lots, right? And this would allow one curb cut per lot. So I think that's a very helpful discrepancy, contradiction that has been brought to our attention. And then I think the question on the table is the, the proposed amendment is to allow one curb cut per 250 feet of street frontage. So, sorry. So, sorry, Mr., uh, sorry, Mr. White, if I jumped in there.
No, I mean, it, thank you, I, I'm trying to formulate my question. Um, but I'm struggling because I'm I'm having a hard time holding all of the. Interconnectedness of it, so um, at one level. The petition, the memo says that the petition requests to increase the number of curb cuts allowed in the TC one district. On sites. Excuse me, four sites on more than one street. So, Tom, can you help me by bringing up your site and. Showing what that would, what that would help with or create for you, so. I, because I'm just having a hard time formulating my question, because then we get into the question of. Frontage, and then you are making a request that open space be considered in frontage as well, so I'm. I feel like I'm holding three things and I'm trying to get to one thing, and then I can get to the next thing, if if this is all making sense.
Sure, so with the way the TC one code is written currently. For this twenty-three acre site, it could be interpreted that we only get. Two curb cuts in total. So with that, that means.
I'm sorry, can I pause you, can I pause you right there, please? And that is because you are um interpreting the code. As the whole development is one lot, and because of that, you are only permitted two. Curb cuts.
We are one lot, we're two hundred and fifty feet more in length.
Yep, so no more than two, and you want us to clarify that by saying. Can that either be tied to the frontage or? What, is it frontage or length, or is it frontage? Or not?
We, we were suggesting to street frontage, so since I have three streets. It would be two curb cuts per street, but then I think the staff recommendation in their memo. That it takes it a little bit further and says if we're doing that, we should tie it to the block, right, or the building dimension?
But then we, then we get into another um calculation of how then you. Count the streets, because then you've got the curves versus the center of the street, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so can we, can we go back to the lot? Can no, can have no more than two curb cuts? Commissioner Abrams, how does what you were clarifying affect that? Does it address that at all?
Does what address that? I got a little lost.
Yeah, because you were saying, um, we're not going to count this as six lots, we're going to count this as one lot, but if it is one lot, then they only get two curb cuts.
Right, well, I think it's, uh, so please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. My just, my understanding was that it's actually not clear that this is one lot, I think that's a question mark.
So, okay, if I can, if I can try, so. A reminder in this conversation, this came up at the um. Um, the ORC, and I just want to make sure that we're all starting from the same assumption. When you look at that concept plan. There are no streets in this development, so let's, let's, I want to start with that, so. When you see those limited access roads, those are not streets as as our code defines them. They're streets, they're openings, they're curb cuts, but they are not streets, so regardless of how the property. Whether there's one twenty-three acre parcel here or four twenty-three acre parcels. The end of the. Our starting point is going to be they are presenting this as a cohesive development of this site, so that means. They're likely going to be considered, considering the stormwater in the context of the entirety of the site, the parking. Likely in the context of the entirety of the site, and so, um, so I would, I would suggest for the, for the application of the standard, you would. This easiest way to think about it is, is this is a twenty-three acre parcel. Um, it is not. Well, uh, twenty-three acre lot, and so. Under, under our current code, which I think is too restrictive, I think this was. Poor language on the city's part. That two curb cuts for a twenty-three acre lot is, I think, overly restrictive.
Right.
And so, um, I think what I am hearing from the commission, and I think the ORC agreed was. Yeah, we need to provide more, I think that there is question on the best way to do that. And staff was coming from, I think Commissioner White, you're absolutely right, we were starting with the premise of. Let's almost go double, double down on this notion of like breaking up the site into these chunks that we have a frame of reference for. That might not be the right chunk size, but I think that's, that's where that, that's where that number came from to apply this proposed language standard.
Okay, so I think I agree that two curb cuts for a twenty-three acre. Lot is insufficient. Now what?
Well, now the proposal is to change the limiting dimension, not a lot, but street frontage. So now you can, you would measure the street frontage, which here would just be State, Eisenhower and Broadway. And for every, oh yeah, and for every two hundred and fifty feet, you get one curb cut.
So, okay, so can we go back again to the slide four? So then that means from the top of the green on State Street down to Eisenhower. We start counting at the property line, because these streets don't matter, because they're not streets, they are just a visual for us, but not in the planning world. And we go two hundred and fifty feet, then you can open, and then two hundred and fifty feet more you can open. However, if they were to apply that, that wouldn't give them this concept that they are proposing.
No, it it would.
Why not?
Okay.
You don't have, you don't have to have one every two hundred and fifty feet, but that is, that is the maximum that we permit.
Okay.
And yeah, they don't have to be spaced two hundred and fifty feet apart.
They don't have to occur every two hundred and fifty feet, but if they chose to do so, they could space them every two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. But we're not configuring their site to being two hundred and fifty feet long. Frontages that then would open, so if I were looking at this concept. It, where the green on state goes to the yellow on state with the arrow to limited access. Um, one might look at that and say, is that two hundred and fifty feet uh from the green to the yellow and then from the yellow to Eisenhower? Tom?
Well, can I just say, this curb cut part of the ordinance is not. Determining the two hundred and fifty feet dimension for them.
Developer would be.
However, soon we are going to get to a conversation around building dimension.
Okay.
Where we limit the width of the building to two hundred and fifty feet, which. Which do a kind of logical organization of breaks every two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So, so in some ways, maybe we do have to talk about these things as, as interrelated consideration.
It feels, it feels like that, because if the open space at the bottom of State and Eisenhower isn't counted in their. Frontage, as Tom said later in the conversation, then he doesn't, they don't meet that sort of seventy percent if that doesn't get counted in, and so then. There, I I'm just trying to figure out like, what is it that we're actually trying to accomplish? And why? Is a, the developer not able to um see or achieve what we're trying to accomplish? And if what Mr. Leonard is saying is correct, that it's too restrictive, okay, that makes sense, how do we make it less restrictive? So that the developer has the flexibility to do what they need to do while still achieving. The goals that the city has for a development of this size. And so I don't know, as I wrap up my question, because I see that Commissioner Mills has her hand up, Mr. Leonard, is there any? Uh, wisdom, insight, guidance you can give us on the goal of the city as it relates to a development like this, so what are we most concerned about? Is it the movement of pedestrians and bicyclists and non-motorized? Um, persons, is it the activation of the streetscape? Is it some other design consideration, um, as best you can say that?
Uh, it is. Street activation, it is minimizing conflicts. And uh, when you think about. A positive, successful connection of a site like this to a transit corridor. The more. Um, the less it is interrupted by vehicular traffic. Via more curb cuts than less, when you are. Walking from point A to a bus stop or point A, building A to building B. That becomes a more positive pedestrian, non-motorized experience. And the goal is to encourage that versus. The alternative, you know, we talked a lot when we were talking about stadium, there's a lot of affection and affinity for the business mix there. It's a very unpleasant place to bike or walk because of that condition, so it's, it's a reaction to avoid a. Automotive-dominated streetscape in favor of creating continuity and more limited interruptions. To other transportation system mode users than cars. And to be, I just want to be clear. Either what the petitioner has asked for here, or the city's proposed approach would accommodate this concept plan. The city's approach is, again, kind of doubling down on this notion of a building block. Literally a uh two hundred and fifty foot dimension that. Could have implications to another site somewhere. That says is greater than five hundred feet of frontage because of some parcel assemblage, and that would create a similar cadence on a. Larger site and it's self-scaling in that sense.
Um, I lost shot, Commissioner Mills, did you have your hand up? You took it down?
I did accept Mr. Leonard made the point that I was just going to say, which is either of these options. Addresses the con- the petitioner's concern, however, I do think that staff's approach is more replicable in other places where. We weren't anticipating that there would be a frontage, I don't think in writing this, that you would have seven hundred and fifty feet, for example, of a single development frontage along. A single road, and the fact that now we have more than that along multiple roads is. Not something that we anticipated, and so this, I think, even though I'm with you, Commissioner Wetherby, about like, oh, the idea that it's more curb cuts. Um, than what we anticipated, which is overall not a good thing. I think it. It future proves it, and especially looking at the maps that were in the packet of other large parcels in other places, I think it allows for that personally.
I think we have more other compli- other more complicated considerations to to go through, so let's maybe try to flush out. Remaining questions on this one and then move on to the next one, we can kind of come back at the end, um, go ahead, Commissioner White.
I just wanted to be um educated on the, a curb cut doesn't have to. Be a automobile accessible opening.
It pretty much will be, you wouldn't typically have a curb, like, we wouldn't call like a side, an ADA sidewalk ramp a curb cut, you're talking about an interruption in the. Pedestrian realm.
Okay.
Any other questions that we can answer or? Comments to make about this? Uh, Commissioner Dish.
I mean, just, just, I hesitate, this is such an obvious thing to say, but, so, so. Uh, one of our goals is to minimize conflict. But, and. But we, but we made a very overly restrictive de- um, allocation of curb cuts. And so more curb cuts is the potential for more conflict, but we started with such an overly restrictive. Standard that we probably do not need to worry about more conflict. Um, except. I think we need to take seriously the point that Commissioner Wetherby made about the speed of traffic along both State and Eisenhower, um. So, uh, and so there's just a concern about the potential for people to just whip around, you know, whip into this development, but you would think that. It will have, it will look like a place where pedestrians are and where trees are, and so it's not as if you're turning onto an entrance or to a highway. Um, it will prob, the design will help to slow you. Um, so, okay.
And, and just the physical placement of the buildings, of course. All right. I feel like we're ready to number two.
Yeah, present to us the.
Parking structure use specific standards, uh, when we drafted the TC one standards, as indicated, we um required that anytime a parking structure is adjacent to a street. It has to have an active use, um, this is replicated in our downtown district where we say you have to have on primary streets. You have to have at least twenty-five feet of that parking um structure put to active use, um. Again, uh, add, applying that to a site like this where uh structure is on two corners, um, uh. I think that. Our proposed, our proposed approach to this is to restrict. Only, only add that requirement when it is against the transit road, you'll recall, uh, we modified TC one, so whenever we are redistricting to something to TC one, we also designate what the transit corridor. In the case of this site, for example, that transit corridor is State Street and Eisenhower. What that means is if a parking deck were to be placed on that corner. Under our proposed language, restricting that active use to the transit street, you would have to put. Active uses on both faces of that parking structure on that corner. On the contrary, if you were to put that parking structure on the corner of Boardwalk and Eisenhower. Under our proposed change, you would only have to do one face, the transit corridor face, and so. Um, we think that that's a reasonable modification and provides some flexibility, um, but it still maintains that design feature. Closest to the transit corridor where we're trying to introduce and maintain that um interaction, the pedestrian oriented um feel. I think this proposed change would work with the petitioners, I think generally the ORC was in agreement. I'll stop there if there's any questions or clarifications or I misspoke.
Uh, Mr. Covert, could you go back to slide four? So I think in our conversation, if I recall, this was primarily concerning the garage on Boardwalk there. So in this revision, then the garage on Boardwalk, because Boardwalk is not a transit corridor, would not have to meet this requirement.
Correct. If a structure were placed along, again, State Street or Eisenhower, it would have to meet under that, under this proposed language.
It would, and already. The petitioner does not need to meet that requirement on the internal streets because they're not streets.
Correct, correct.
Any questions or comments here? We're all good, okay, wow.
Next, uh, we technically put this in the somewhat supported, so uh, the next amendment is to uh, recognize, like, this concept plan that you see here includes some buildings. That exceed the current TC one regulations, which restrict the. Frontage of a building along a street to no more than two hundred and fifty feet and the diagonal to uh, no more than three hundred and sixty feet. Again, when I I talked to, I referenced this when we were talking about the streets, two hundred and fifty uh foot block is a block that we used in. Um, crafting a, a standard within the TC one. Um, there are other blocks downtown, as the ORC saw some examples, I'm sure Mr. Covert could bring examples up as well. Um, the ORC discussion of this was maybe. Um, there's lots of conversation about um, the human scale, visual interest. Pedestrian experience as buildings get longer, um, and so one of the things that was asked for was some more. Uh, dimensions, I really appreciate the petitioner shared some experience that they did, we included in your memo some examples of other buildings in the city. Um, that it, that either are comparable to these standards or exceed the two hundred and fifty feet. Um, I won't read those, but I think, uh, I think a couple of them were invoked in the ORC discussion, sort of really quickly, just doing some mapping on the fly. But we tried to provide some other examples of these, generally, I think that the, at the ORC discussion, there was some opening to consider. Um, particularly on a large site like this, there might be some appropriate way to accommodate larger blocks or. Some sort of scale where you can intersperse smaller and larger blocks to. to add uh, an interest or a pattern of development that's appropriate. Um, I'll stop there. We've shared the dimensions. Um, I think this is something that would, I would really benefit from some more feedback from the planning commission about what you would like to see. The other thing that we attached a lot of maps to the packet that showed where parcels are that are three acres and larger. This is one sort of s- size threshold that was referenced in the discussion as maybe for larger sites such as three acres and larger. Um, maybe we provide some sort of balance of larger buildings or allow larger buildings. So that was just intended to provide one sorting of parcels in this, in the TC one districts about where this might apply. Um, ORC members, uh, any thoughts on that discussion? And if I've miscategorize anything? Um, but this might be an opportunity for us to talk about some of the project examples we have elsewhere in our community and whether they feel appropriately scaled, whether they feel wrong. Um, do we envision these buildings in our TC one districts?
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Uh, Mr. Cover, on slide eight, do you have annotated which buildings are more than, here we go. Okay, perfect. And then Commissioner Adams, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to chime in here just because I think I was the somewhat support of the original proposal. So I figured I should explain myself. Um, I thought using the originally plotted dimensions of the downtown blocks as a reference point to construct the original TC one building footprint limit, that seemed, you know, appropriate as a choice, as a starting point. Um, but I think as a staff report that went to the, went to the ORC noted, there's a variety of block sizes downtown now. Most are comfortable and pedestrian friendly. That's been my experience with it. Um, the, the, the key thing, and we'll get to this in a minute, was preserving the street wall. Um, and that's, that's another request to change it that I think as the staff report tonight indicated, there wasn't a lot of support for. I, I felt like that was really where I wanted to plant my flag and, and that seemed more integral to the pedestrian experience than the proposed change from, I think it was two fifty to, was it three fifty or three sixty? I can't remember. But um, when I was looking at the maps that were a- attached to the ORC agenda, there were a lot of blocks downtown that had that or greater dimensions. And, and I, I've never felt that, that those are problematic downtown.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Uh, Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I just want to say that I don't understand staff's suggestion. So staff suggests considering an alternative, adding an option for buildings up to five hundred feet in width, which is much more than we see downtown and more than the petition is asking for. And up to seventy-two feet diagonal.
I think it's supposed to be seven hundred and twenty.
Thank you, because that is like, I was like, what?
I'm sorry, I'm very bad at geometry.
That's what I thought. Okay. And then, but then there's more. After the fourth building on the site, that too was a little bit puzzling for me, just in the abstract.
Yeah. So the intention here was that for larger sites, you have to start with a smaller scale of buildings. Once you start establishing some of that pattern, that might mitigate a larger, more massive, longer building to incorporate into a larger scale of development. But it would prohibit on a site that you didn't have that same scale from just taking a site and putting a single massive building on it. So it would, it would, it would sort of be a bit of a blend. And frankly, it would provide some building and likely parking structure flexibility where once you got to a certain size, it would provide some more flexibility for a larger footprint, which is not unrealistic when you're talking about incorporating structured parking, particularly if we want to encourage those to be constructed in a way that has utility for reclaiming space in the future. They do demand a certain footprint. And so, um, so our, our intention was not to allow larger buildings everywhere, but only after you started establishing some other more urban scale, if two hundred and fifty feet is that right urban scale before you're allowed to incorporate larger buildings.
Okay, so this is, this is really helpful. Then I just have, so let me make, again, I always want to try to make sure that I've understood. Um, there are two goals with what, with the way you've worded this and the idea of after the fourth, I think that's it, after, after the fourth building. Um, the idea is to get, um, to permit, to allow for a mix of building sizes and to prevent
Only large buildings.
Massiveness, yeah, overly massive ones. Um, and then the, the, the second one very simply is the convertibility of parking structures. So is, is it with re- um, is it with respect to the second one, the idea of convertibility of parking structures? That made you, um, offer so much more footprint than the petitioner is asking for?
Well, I think it provides some more flexibility. I, again, I think this is one that was unresolved in the context of the ORC. I think this is one that, um, I just, I just want to sort of lay more threadbare to the planning commission. We tried to bring some more data to this discussion, some more examples. Um, I would say when I look at some of those buildings that we provided examples with, um, you know, many of them seem um, some seem okay, some seem, you know, like, I, I don't think it's just size. Like, for example, when I'm looking at the examples between the standard and the fourth and William Deck, right? Those are very different experiences, but a very similar block scale. And so, um, to Commissioner White's point, some of these are interrelated when we're requiring act- activeness, but I just want to, I just want to be clear. Our dimensions that we're proposing here, they're not right or wrong. Um, the applicant has obviously proposed something. Um, I think it would just be just as appropriate for the planning commission to say, no, there's a lot of buildings here that are over two hundred and fifty feet that we don't have any problems with. So um, maybe that two hundred and fifty feet isn't the golden dimension that we should be so concerned about.
Commissioner Dish, did you have more questions or comments?
No.
Oops. Okay, you're satisfied. Okay, uh, Commissioner Weatherby. Oh, we can't hear you again. Sorry.
Better?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Sounds good.
It's, it's more how you interact with these buildings. So like, if I take the yard and six eighteen, which are right across from each other. Um, the yard actually has a lot of doorways on the sidewalk. It has big windows, whereas six fifteen is sort of much more blocky. There's not a lot of interacting. There's one door in the middle, but in a parking garage, but other than that, like, so to me, it wasn't sort of how big they are, but how you interact with them is, is really more, you know, there, I think it's better to have it not be always the same size because I think that reflects a, an actual streetscape. But if it's, you know, like the standard is not a great experience walking by the standard because there's a long stretch of just wall. And so, um, I, I think for me, and I, I know that's hard to, because requiring articulation and stuff ends up with some very kind of fake looking buildings at times and, and not necessarily. But, but somehow like doorways are interacting rather than is more to me the issue than how big the building is. And so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
I would agree with that. It's not what I was gonna say, but I would, I had a similar concern, just like, are you gonna walk by? Just like, is it gonna feel monolithic? Um, so I'm not entirely sure how we address that, but can we go back to the overall site plan? For a second, because I was just trying to figure out the, the, after the fourth building thing, and I was trying to figure out how to like, break this, I guess. Um, so there's a lot of buildings on this site and some of them are like very teeny tiny. And you, in theory, with this proposed change could have like four teeny tiny buildings. And then all of a sudden, on our street frontages, on our corridors, have really, really long buildings. And I'm not sure that that's our intent here. Like, I'm also okay with like, I, I understand what they're trying to do, like this specific site plan. But like, say this is a blank slate, a totally different developer. And they're like, oh, we'll just put like these smaller buildings in the middle and then just like, we'll do like two curb cuts and just line the whole side with an entire building. Um, I, I so I guess I'm not sure that I'm, I don't know if it's specific enough, like the fourth build, like I don't, maybe we want to specify something more about the actual transit corridor. Because like, I don't care how big the buildings are on the inside necessarily, but I just wouldn't want to see like that A one building, like repeated, copy pasted necessarily look across the whole site. So I, I don't know. If anybody else has thoughts on that four building thing and where the location should be.
And I just, I just wanna, you know, part of this was trying to build in some flexibility for sites. I just want to be clear. The petitioner's ask was uh, up to three hundred feet um, in width and up to four hundred and fifty feet in diagonal. So, um, there, you know, I think that's where they were talking about the sort of proposed pedestrian time experience, which is interesting. Um, but, um, yeah, and, and, and I think what staff was, the sort of like Commissioner Mills had gotten to, you know, I think we spent a lot of time drafting this district, thinking about parcel, specific um, parcels, not necessarily aggregating these big development sites. And so, um, you know, I've, we can build in a lot of flexibility. We could not, we could keep a, a different, a, a consistent building size and just slightly increase it if we see a project like this is resonates. Um, and then we could also, you know, pick that dimension. Maybe it's not that dimension, but maybe it's something else based on the experience of these other buildings in the city that feel appropriate.
Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner White.
I agree with what Commissioner Hammer Schmidt said. And so in some ways, I think it's, I would rather not have the like, after four buildings, you are allowed to have massive because we don't know what that might look like. And, and that number being so significantly larger either, even than what is needed on this particular site. So I appreciate all of the background that went into this, and I think that their case can be made that like a, a length of three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty is reasonable, but I don't know that we need to go to five hundred. Because I just don't know that there's that downtown. And I mean, even the, the, the length of, you know, the west side of Main Street between William and Liberty, um, there is lots of articulation and lots of different things going on. And I, and that makes that experience way different. And so, um, but even then, it's nice to have a cut through, um, when it's open by the old cuisine. Anyway, so, um, I, I think I would prefer just to do something more similar to what the developer had proposed to give some additional flexibility, but not have, yeah, not have the five hundred feet and the bifurcation based on how many bill.
I think that approach is also simpler, like, you know, whenever we build something like after, um, we might be introducing unnecessary complexities.
Uh, Commissioner White.
So I, I also want to vote for flexibility uh, here. And I wonder if it's, um, if we could do flexibility with limits. So then you could still do your five hundred and seven fifty, but it's like up to, but, or not to exceed uh, type of thing so that you get some more of the flexibility. I'm trying to process this because I actually, every week I'm on this site. Uh, because my daughters are at an aerial that is on the um, east side of Broad. Uh, yeah, over here. Thank you, Mr. Cover. And um, I bike while they have their lesson. And so I'm going down to the street that is above D one at the sort of northeast uh, side. And so I'm just trying to think about what, um, Commissioner Weatherby talked about in terms of uh, the standard and how long a block is. And I was thinking about it in terms of the golf course. Because we uh, live on the other side of the golf course on Sile Church. And so we have to go all the way around, like downstate, across Eisenhower, back up Maine. And then we get there, right? And so that feels long to me. Walking five hundred feet doesn't feel long to me. And the nice thing is, is if you go through the athletic center, there is a fence that's right before the soccer field that is open. And there's an apartment complex and you can cut through and, you know, get yourself back to Maine a little bit faster. And so then that had me thinking about this site, um, or sites like this. And, and then I got lost with what our purpose is. Is our purpose to minimize the end, first you said conflicts, which I think I understand. But I don't see how a five hundred foot stretch introduces more conflicts. I actually think it achieves what we are talking about in terms of minimizing conflict. So then I thought, well, maybe what we're trying to do is break up a long street wall because that feels on- onerous for someone. And I wonder what are the tools in the planning that could achieve that? That wouldn't be restrictive to a developer. But that could allow them to go five hundred feet if they had the little alley that Commissioner Mills just talked about on Main Street that cuts you from Maine to the back parking lot next to the, the Greek restaurant. But I think it's like Milk and something now. Um, that feels really fantastic as a pedestrian. And if it had a ten foot path, that would feel even better as a biker because now bikers and pedestrians can get through it. But if we're trying to achieve something for a car, then I, I've lost, I've lost our subject and I'm, and I'm struggling. So if, can someone help me with the subject? Like, is the subject the pedestrian? Here, and we don't want a long five hundred foot street wall because that feels brutal to their experience?
Yeah, there, we, you're, you're absolutely right. You know, there, they are different goals. The, the best way to minimize potential pedestrian conflicts with vehicles is to have no curb cuts along this. Um, to have no curb cuts without any, but we don't want that to be a, if that's a building that is seven hundred and fifty feet long, it's kind of like walking past, I don't know. I'm trying to, it's probably like two west halls, right? You, you're just walking and walking and walking and it becomes a place that you don't necessarily enjoy feel comfortable walking. And so it's definitely a balance.
So what are the tools in the planning toolkit that would allow a developer to break that up and still achieve their best sort of vision for their parcel? Like, is that a, a breeze block, like a breezeway? I, I don't know uh, uh, the term, but like something that the building is built and it's like an alley, but it's not a car alley, it's a pedestrian alley. And so you can cut through.
Well, I mean, that, that'd be a question, yeah, that, that would of course be a tool, like one of, like, a code that could be written is to say, your building can't be longer than two hundred and fifty feet. However, it could go to five hundred feet if you provide a non-motorized pathway through the building. Um, I would, I would love to though, hear from like, for in these examples, for example, where they're putting this together. When I look at the southwest corner, that seems possible. It might not be desirable, but it seems possible. When you start, you know, when you start thinking about the physicality, if that's a, say that's a hotel site breaking up your ground floor where it has this interruption in space, has some operational impacts to that. In the case of the parking structure, if that's over two hundred and fifty feet, poking a pathway through there seems challenging, not impossible. But, um, so yeah, the tools that would be in place would be, you have to provide some of those perforations with some pattern. Um, I think that's what we're trying to do with the curb cuts and the block sizes a little bit instead. Um, but yeah, absolutely. We could put something in, in place like that. It might not have the flexibility for the buildings we're seeing here that we might hope that it does, practically speaking.
So, Mr. Cover, would it work in A one? Like, that's your hotel that's fronting state.
That is the hotel that we're looking at on A.
That is the hotel that we're looking at on A one.
And so where those cluster of four uh trees are. Right near the A one, if that was just some kind of little cut through uh, or it's the lobby. Um, that would allow you to achieve that length without. Having to activate as much of it or you know, like how would that land for you? I guess is a better question. I don't want to make your design for you.
Yeah, so let me come back to a couple of things. One of the things that. We were trying to do in our request of three acres is, is limit that. It's kind of self-imposed limit with the three acres. So that we're only talking about a certain number of the TC one zone parcels, right? So. Um, what I've learned from our Oxford team is that that is fifty-three of the four hundred and twenty-three. Parcels in the TC one district. So that kind of helps limit it right there. Number two, if we're talking about curb cuts and so on, so I, I use. Boardwalk here as an example. If I'm only getting two curb cuts across the street frontage, then I'm inevitably going to have. A building that's going to be longer in length than two hundred and fifty feet, right? So. We thought we were limiting it to two fifty to the request of, what was it, three sixty? Um, and only impacting fifty-three parcels. When we talk about A one in this kind of narrow configuration. Could that building be broken into two? Um, it probably could. We would slide a building down and lose some of the um. Open space there at the corner, but then we're talking about things like uh efficiency of hotels. And how they work best and what the dimension is, you know, front to back. So east to west in this case. With the hall and the rooms and so on. So um, could you do it? Yeah, practically speaking, you could, but it's just not as efficient. Um, but. In general, could you add articulations to the buildings that make? It look different? And I'm going to go back to um this rendering here, you know, how they have. This facade seems different than this and they, they change it up going down, down the way. And how much? How much of a break does there need to be and so on? So um, again, we were trying to limit it with the three acres. And the building dimension.
Mr. White, did you have more, more questions or comments? You done?
I mean, I, I do, but I'm, um, I feel like I need more time to sort of process it because. I'm, I'm hearing it. I'm like, oh, but. Just on your render page, uh, slide six, I think it is. So like in the center where there's that single tree against a white background next to the car. It's uh, uh, down uh to the right, sorry. Yes, that one, right? Like, could that be an opening? You know, like it's still the building. It's still built completely. There, but I could go through that opening um and get to the other side. And would that count? For planning and would it not disrupt your construction such that you don't have to build two buildings? But I can still use that as a cut through and I'm not like shunned or kicked out. And it makes it easier for me to get around the building, you know, or get through the building as opposed to having to go around it. Like if that. That feels, yeah, that space there, that could be an opening that we could. That would fit what Mr. Leonard was talking about. That feels like, great, now you get your. Very long building and then I get to get the cut through. And I'll just say this, um, as a pedestrian. I make goat trails wherever I can find them. So whether they were designed by someone or not. I, you know, you, you cut through buildings all the time. Um, and, and so that, that's just a natural thing. And what would it look like if you? Sort of made that a part of the design to achieve the goals of having uh the, the length that you want. Uh, here. And then we can put that in the code and then that gives you the flexibility as opposed to the restriction of the code.
So maybe I'll just jump in here um to say that I think there are. Two, two things maybe that are being discussed. But I also want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding. So I think that what you're saying for the cut through Commissioner White would be for buildings. Not for a building that's two hundred and fifty feet, probably not even required for building three hundred feet, but you're talking about something. Five hundred ish or N more or something, right? So I think there's still on the, so that's one thing. I think, and that's not, and that's kind of outside the scope of what the petitioner has. Asked, asked for, not that we shouldn't talk about it, but just to maybe come back. I think also on the table is a more modest. Increase from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty. On, on bigger sites, which is currently hit at three acres. We could talk about whether that's the right threshold. Um, which I think I personally would feel like. Shouldn't require a, a pedestrian cut through at three, at a three hundred and fifty foot building. We have lots of those all over town. So it might be good to just kind of take the temperature on. The, the, uh, the proposal to increase for larger lots. Increasing the level building. Width to three hundred feet. As its kind of own thing, and then we could talk about the kind of mega building uh separately.
I think I don't have any objection to changing it from two fifty to three fifty, three sixty as the new floor. But I think I was trying to come towards the staff proposal of five hundred um. Um, width and seven twenty diameter of. A solution that. Doesn't require them to separate the building, but that we could use in the code to give flexibility. Cause I think the thing I. I think my objective, I'll say it this way, is how can we create enough flexibility that a. Motivated developer is going to utilize all of the tools to achieve. The vision that they have so that we don't have to keep doing text amendments. And in my mind, if our goal is pedestrian conflict. It feels like we can achieve that using creative. Tools. And then we say to developers, hey. You figure this out, but here's two or three tools that can help you achieve what you want. That may not be as onerous as breaking up this building, putting in a street. Having to putting curb cuts and all these kinds of things. So I think that. Like, if I have an agenda, that is my agenda.
Can I maybe ask you a clarifying question about this pedestrian cut through? Is it important to you that it also be a bikeway?
No, I, I don't need it to be a bikeway. If, if it is, if I can walk it, I can walk my bike through it.
The reason I'm asking that is because I want to know whether it would be a requirement that it be exterior. Um, so uh, there is considerable cost to producing an exterior cut through.
Yes, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I, if, if it's a door that can, I can open, yeah.
But there is, but if it was a publicly accessible pass through, um. Which for me, I'm very familiar with just on the buildings on, a lot of buildings on campus, which are public buildings. So they're open and anybody can just walk right in. Uh, and a lot of buildings, you, in the winter, you walk in one end and you walk out the other. Um, so. Would something like that in your mind qualify?
Yeah, and I'll give you a practical example that I was familiar with is First Pres um, right on uh Wasana. They, the, because of the placement of the church, uh, students who were on the other side. Would have to walk all the way around. And for years, they allowed students to just pass through the hallway. Um, of the church, which was like super simple, super straightforward. And you could probably even just walk your bike through there. As well. And it had a minimal impact. Plus it allowed the church to have, you know, contact. With the students as they walk through the building. So like, that felt like a win-win-win. And that, that's what's in my mind.
I, I would. That kind of experience though, I, that, it seems very effective to me for perforation into the site. It doesn't seem very different to me from a seven hundred foot long building. If it's a doorway that people can walk through. So I, I just want to, I just want to make it clear. Like, I think when, when we started talking about this, we were talking about scale and we were talking about mass. And I think we were thinking about a cut through. At the ground level, I guess I was absolutely jumping to a conclusion that it was open air. Because it, it added a break. And so I just, I just want to be clear that. Adding that sort of interior. Public access to it, that, that can be very effective, but I think. There are design considerations where it probably either feels. Like a publicly welcome place or it doesn't. And it just feels like a long building. So. I just want to name that if. If we're, if that's something we want to go to, we might want to think about. The, I don't know, the design cues, the, how, how does it, how is that apparent that this door? Serves that purpose? And how is it distinct maybe from another door on the building?
Is there, uh? What are the, sorry, I'll frame this as a different kind of question. What are the current requirements for? Active program and transparency on the transit corridor.
So right now, within uh the first hundred feet of the corner, you have to have. Transparency like our downtown. So that's from. I want to say twenty-four inches up to. Eight feet has to be like seventy percent transparent. You have to have doors that function to the transit corridor. Um. Then once you get so far from that intersection, there's more flexibility. That's where we off up, offer the opportunity for. Dedicated residential uses. So, um. So I think like physically you could accommodate what you're talking about within our guidelines, but it. It could still very much read. It could read it as the person walking down the street, not accessing that as a seven hundred foot long building. It's really going to be effective for people who want to access the site. So. Just.
I just raised it to, to say that we already have things in place that would require a kind of.
Some connection.
Odd, an articulated facade. This is not going to be. A big opaque box, seven hundred foot long box sitting on the site, right? Uh, Commissioner Weatherby. No, we can't hear you. You're muted. You're muted.
All right, gotta switch too many things here. Um, uh, two examples that I can think of just is.
Sorry.
Need to get Commissioner Weatherby some IT support.
Okay. All right, Christian weather be given up, um.
Um, I'm hearing. Comfort with the petitioners proposed change. Without the complexity of. Only. Well, let me back up. Without the complexity of only after so many buildings. Is the commission comfortable with that standard on all sites or only large sites? Any inkling? From my, from my perspective, if it's. If that's a comfortable scale for us, I don't know that it should depend on the size of the site.
Maybe related to that, I just wanted to point out. So in the staff report, we get this information about the number of parcels that are greater than three acres, which was useful. But I actually think as a proportion of parse, as a proportion of square footage, it's big. Right? Like, uh, so, and if we're just counting parcels, it seems small, like, oh, there's only fifty. And then you look at the map and you realize actually. As a proportion, it's big. So. The majority of developments are gonna ha- are gonna meet this requirement for the three hundred foot building, it seems.
Yeah, and I think developments expensive. And so I think that the, the parcels that aren't three acres now might very well become three acres. So. Keep, keep it on larger parcels or?
I would be comfortable with changing it to three hundred.
Okay, great. And, and then I guess with the. Um, with the commission's discussion, um, what I'm going to do is brainstorm that. Next iteration. I, I, I just keep it open. We might propose something for larger buildings that have some sort of delineated. Access, break, something. Um, but we'll start from that as. If you will, icing, um, we will start probably modif- proposing language that is consistent with what the petitioner has proposed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we're coming up on the building frontage requirement. Yeah, building frontage, right.
So this is one that didn't have a lot of support, I think, at the ORC. Um, a lot of the discussion at the ORC to my understanding was about the intention of this district. It was about. The things we're talking about here, that relationship to how do you feel as a pedestrian on these corridors? How do you feel as somebody accessing these buildings in rela- relative to? The roadway, relative to the transit system and the like. Um. We, right now, the way TC one is drafted, we provide a seventy percent. And so what that is, is that gives you thirty percent. To provide all of everything else. So that's going to be your street curb cuts. That would be. Um, a plaza, whatever. So we have said you get to do thirty percent of that. That's a little bit different than how we do it in the downtown. Where we specifically exempt some, some activities. Um. Not soup, not survey data level, but I, when I was looking at this, uh, I was. Trying to think of an example. And so because we keep talking about the downtown core, I thought. It might be interesting to compare that. So what I did is just some brief um math of the, the. Imagine you are on Washington and Ashley at Sweet Waters. And you are walking from the center of Ashley to the center of Fifth. So. And in front of the Blue Nile and this former, the old Salvation Army building. Um, that span. Is uh twenty-six percent. Non-frontage. So, so, or seventy-four percent. Of building frontage along that span.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, no.
No.
No, seventy-four.
Seventy-four, sorry, you're right.
Yeah, um, so, um, so that's just a reference. And so here in the TC one. We've got thirty percent, we provide thirty percent. So a little bit more than that experience. At the same time, downtown is downtown, right? It's, it's a different scale. It's a different. Different framework of transportation modes than what is currently occurring on Eisenhower and South State. And so, um, so at the ORC, I think that there was a lot of concern about opening this up, recognizing that. The intention of that thirty percent is to provide some liben- limited. Perforation on those sites so that we are starting to create that streetscape experience that people. Want to be at and will feel comfortable at when they're accessing the bus. Um, but thirty percent, like I, I have to say. That's awfully close to twenty-six percent and perhaps our most pedestrian or oriented. Um, place in the city with a possible exception of s- some measurement on campus somewhere. Um. I'll stop there. Um, I don't know if I mischaracterize anything by the ORC. Um. This. To be cleared, similar to our conversation about curb cuts. This, um, I would recommend you consider this in the context of this being a development site. So when you're looking at this, you're going to be thinking seventy percent along boardwalk, seventy percent along Eisenhower, seventy percent. Along State Street. Um. How does that feel? Uh, again, I think the ORC had a lot of strong opinions that, no. That was a very important and intentional aspect of creating this district for good reasons. Um. It's been asked to be considered.
Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add to that. Is my perception is that, you know, maybe in contract, contrasting with downtown. But even downtown, these, these little plazas and. Gathering spaces they feel and are utilized to me even downtown. And I feel like they're going to be less utilized out at this, in this section of the city. And it's not to say that. Developers can't build them. It's just they can't be on the frontage. And that, again, that, that is intention. With the express purpose of the district and it's, it's in con- it's intention with the council's. Stated purpose in passing. So it didn't feel appropriate and, and there's flexibility baked in to the, the seventy, thirty split as it is.
Thanks. I agree with that too. Any other thoughts? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Mills.
I concur. And I mean. In particular, we gave a lot of thought to corners. Um, and specifically that, that the part in question is on the corner where we specifically wanted more active uses and. And wanted to. Um, and specifically that that the part in question is on the corner where we specifically wanted more active uses and and wanted to like. Um, I'm not super comfortable with it not with with deviating from that. And I recognize that it's different than what else is on the other corners. But again, this what currently, but we're trying to move away from what our current design is. So I I think that this change particularly like. In the places indicated here are are not the intention of of when we drafted this and are kind of counter to it, so.
Thanks. All right. Nobody's, nobody's gonna go to bat for. Oh, Commissioner Dish.
I don't know if I'm gonna go to bat, um, as it's always been difficult for me to connect uh, between a ball and a bat, but uh. Athletic skills notwithstanding, I did, I'm just wanting to. Perhaps consider the point that was made about sightlines. At the corner of State and Eisenhower and have some discussion of that. The.
Do you mean?
Presentation, yeah, I'm I'm interested in hearing people's reaction. Yeah, that one. That that the that. Have that that little.
Mm-hmm.
Bit of open space would facilitate for both pedestrians and drivers. Um. Seeing people who wanna cross the street. I'm I'm not sure, maybe we should ask. Um, the petitioner to to elaborate that in a little bit more detail.
That would also, Mr. Covert, could you tell us, you're saying currently as we see it here, this exceeds thirty percent. Do you know by how much?
Yeah, let me look at something here.
I think it would help us to just know, does it go away entirely or does it get reduced by a little bit?
So we're me- measuring that block length at three hundred and eighty two feet and currently that building is shown at two hundred and seventy six feet. So let me get my calculator.
But wouldn't it be a thirty percent over the whole, all the way from Eisenhower to the end of your lot line at the top?
My understanding of that it's from the length of the block or the property line, if you will, to this.
It does not include the non-streets, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, I would actually for for our calculation, we would measure from the corner here at Eisenhower Parkway to the extent of the property boundary. For getting to that calculation.
The so the there, so their private street counts towards that thirty percent.
Part of that thirty percent.
So it's actually worse than what we're seeing or sorry, not worse, but there's more.
I I have to defer to engineering on this, I think so. Um, you you might recall, uh. I think it was um, the South Town proposal that actually had um. I think it's, I wanna say Tom, you might know this better than I do. I think that the street intersection visibility triangle is around. Twenty five by twenty five feet ideally. Um. Um, and so I think that there's ample room to. Build out that frontage along streets and still maintain a safe path pattern of visibility at a corner intersection.
So one of, what, yeah, one of the things we heard was that there was a concern with this intersection that. When we've met with various stakeholder groups, they've indicated that it's. Difficult to cross as a pedestrian because of the lengths and so on. Um, and we've, some of you have mentioned here tonight that the speeds of the street and so on. So we were trying to keep more of an open element here to be able to see further across anybody, any pedestrians or bikes using the bike lane and so on. Um, would not conflict with the the turns coming out of Eisenhower. Is there, is there, do we meet the triangle? Yeah, and we could, we could move landscape around, but we were trying to push it back to make it feel more comfortable there. So Brett. Back to the co- you would calculate from here to here?
Yeah.
This, the thirty percent, okay.
And that's the intention is there's more building frontage, creating that street wall than there is perforation. But I think it's in, it's, I think it's an interesting question. We were just talking about. The benefit of adding additional perforation on long buildings, for example, that's kind of counter to this, right? You know, if we're gonna allow. Longer buildings, I don't know how the math works out, but um. Um, I think one of the things and and the petitioner is asking for this, they're they're suggesting there might be some very specific things. That are considered differently. I guess that might be a question to the commission. Do you? What is the, if that thirty percent is comprised of streets, plazas? A corner call out, do you wanna consider those things differently? I think the intention was no, let's provide about, you know, a little less than a third of your. Space that you, we give you flexibility to use, but we want the majority to be a building.
So if I correct, if I correctly calculated this. Three eighty two plus three ten. Six ninety two. I would need to have seventy percent of that, which is four hundred and eighty four and a half feet. My building length here with B one and A one is five hundred and four, so I exceed that. So what, which would be good?
Yeah, yeah, so you'd meet that standard.
The only thing that I would be. Defi- uh, deficient's not the right term, uh, I would be violating would be this building length here at two seventy six. This would need to be two fifty then.
But we're gonna be, we just talked about, actually, yeah, yeah.
If that goes forward, then we would conform.
So maybe it was more about clarifying the standard than a need to to adjust it.
Right, so with that, with that interpretation, then it would appear that we conform. And then if I'm applying that to the frontage of Eisenhower, I have two existing buildings that would be considered. Non-conforming. So am I, am I?
Those aren't. Those aren't excluded, Brett, because they're not part of this development?
Um, it's a good question. No, I think you're gonna have to knock them down.
Hold on my phone, my text is blowing up right now.
Um, yeah. So uh, we have provisions for existing buildings. Um. I guess I'd like to, I'd like, I don't. I'd like to sort of consider how we would look at that. So, yeah, when I see the Eisenhower Parkway, that obviously doesn't meet that intention, right?
Right.
Doesn't have that frontage. State Street seems viable. Boardwalk doesn't seem the same way, so um.
I mean, we we would probably meet it if we were measuring, you know, to here.
Yeah, yeah.
To here.
But I, so um, and I I. That, I think that is the intention, the intention to take that span. And divvy it up in that regards, I I.
Well, let me calculate it based.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you, Brett. Let me calculate it in the graphic based on what we've just talked about in the interpretation. And give you some thoughts of what we see with the existing buildings. And then have you react to that and then maybe we we bring that back and have a conversation about that.
Well, I think, yeah, we could, we could maybe provide that detail when this comes forward with.
Yeah.
Civics to give the commission the benefit of that real, real analysis with the real numbers.
Yeah.
But in short, I guess I'm hearing from the commission that that seventy percent was very intentional. And. There's not a lot of desire to, you know, to my my example of, this is comparable to Ashley to Fifth. Um, and that's okay with the commission is what I'm hearing.
Any objections, any dissenters to that characterization? Okay. And then the last thing then is the definition of the block, which maybe we're gonna just scrub the block from the EDC.
Yeah, I think um. I think these other changes would be more impactful.
Okay.
Thank you. Um. Um. I appreciate it. It sounds like what I'm hearing is a lot of validation of the conversation at. The ORC. One change is I feel like we have a little bit more focus on the building size. I'm hearing support for the petitioners. Um, proposed change broadly, not limited to large lots, but also I am. Seeing a little bit of an opening for staff to explore, maybe considering larger blocks if it meets some sort of condition or. Perforation or public access. Um, so we'll sort of stew on that, I would. I I'm not gonna promise that we're gonna propose that, but um, we definitely have some clear direction on what to present in regards to a base to start with, which I think would be. Um, accommodating this pro- this proposal, so. And provide some flexibility elsewhere in the districts as well.
Great. Any last comments, questions on the TC one text amendments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Covert.
Thank you very much.
Uh, okay, we will move on then to our last opportunity for public comment. Persons may speak for up to three minutes. If you want to address the planning commission during our working session, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in. I do not see anybody raising their hand. All right. Then we will move on to item six, which is adjournment. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.